Council meeting for Monday, February 5th, 2024, 5:30 PM. This time, I'd like to ask you to please silence your cellphones and put them on vibrate to limit interruptions. Moving on with the agenda, let's move on to item number one, roll call.
Burlingame?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padja Gula?
Here.
Ross?
Moving on to item number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the mayor's report, before I get to the proclamation, just a few of the meetings and events that I've attended since the last city council meeting. We had a chamber board meeting, one-on-one with the city manager. We had our regularly scheduled NAS Authority meeting out at the Public Works Building. Retirement celebration for the general manager of Verendry Electric, that's Randy Halk, and wishing him the best of luck on his next chapter. Had meetings with the Lord's Cupboard, several meetings concerning Project B. Also attended a community committee that is planning a suicide symposium for the month of September, we had a planning meeting there. Governmental Affairs Committee and heard from the Secretary of State of North Dakota. Military Affairs Committee, we heard last week, Minnet Air Force Base and their economic impact is at $621 million in the community, so that's a pretty good number for that. Also attended the Employee Winter Recognition Celebration and for those staff members that took part in the planning, organization, and working that event, that was, wow, that was amazing. So kudos to that group of employees that put that event together, and I think, yeah, that was last Friday. So, any questions on the activities? If not, we will move to item 3.1, and that is proclamation. Mayor proclaims February 8th as Giving Hearts Day. Whereas the goals of Giving Hearts Day are to raise awareness of the charitable nonprofit sector and its organizations in North Dakota to promote online giving and provide donors with opportunity to multiply the results of their giving. And whereas Giving Hearts Day is an example of the private sector assisting charitable nonprofit organizations that improve the quality of life for many members of our community. And whereas the charitable nonprofit sector supports individuals and families with programs, materials, and funds that promote, encourage, and sustain independence and self-sufficiency. And whereas this year's participating local charities include Camp Bentley, Crew Northern Plains campuses, Dakota Hope Clinic, Greater Minnet Concerts, Habitat for Humanity Northern Lights, Critter Crazy, Matthew 25 Project, Men's Winter Refuge, North Dakota Association for the Disabled, Prairie Grit Adaptive Sports, the Salvation Army, Youth for Christ, and Youth Works. And whereas these charities have demonstrated a need for collaboration and resources and have combined their efforts for this 24-hour fundraising event that is dedicated to inspiring online donations at impactgiveback.org. Now, therefore do I, Tom Ross, Mayor of the City of Minnet, hereby proclaim February 8th, 2024, as Giving Hearts Day in Minnet and ask public officials, businesses, and community leaders, and all Minnet residents to observe this day with appropriate activities and programs, recognize the charitable nonprofits, their staffs, and volunteers who provide essential services to our community, and support Giving Hearts Day by volunteering or providing financial support to the charities in Minnet and across North Dakota and Northwest Minnesota at GivingHeartsDay.org, signed by Tom Ross and Michaela McWilliams. So, if we have a group, I don't know if you had any words to share, or you just want me to present you with the proclamation. Perfect.
Hey, Tim or Jason, did you want to mention that people can do early giving now, they don't have to schedule it? Because that's a change this year.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, say that in the microphone.
Yeah, and actually you can start giving at GivingHeartsDay.org. It started on January 2nd, so you can, actually, you don't have to wait for 24 hours. So, you can give at GivingHeartsDay.org, and it actually started on January 2nd, and so you can start giving now, instead of waiting for the 24-hour. It's not just a one-day thing anymore, so.
Last minute.
Yeah, it's no last minute, you can start giving right now.
Nothing further, we'll move on to item number four on the agenda, and that is the city manager's report. Harold?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. As always, is included a fairly comprehensive memo from staff to council, given an update on everything we've been working on over the last couple of weeks. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any, with regards to the memo.
Are there any questions, Harold?
If not, again, the mayor kind of alluded to it, but we had our winter employee recognition event last Friday evening. I would also like to personally thank those that are on the Employee Recognition Committee who put in a lot of work. This is the first year that they've been involved in that. Last year, my office kind of handled that and took care of that, but that got passed on to them, and they did a phenomenal job with that. And we had a great turnout from staff, with a lot of families there, and it was great to see a lot of the kids running around and participating and enjoying themselves as well. We also did our first city manager recognition of what I call the Pride Awards, Pride being an acronym for our values of professionalism, responsibility, integrity, dedication, and excellence. And we had several employees that were recognized for different actions throughout the year. It started out as self-nominations from other employees and supervisors throughout the year, and if any employee was nominated for a recognition, they received an immediate recognition earlier in the year from the employee committee, but then I reviewed through all those and picked out a handful to honor specifically with a plaque and a city manager coin. And many of them were recognized Friday evening at the event as well. And some great things that our employees do on a regular basis, it's kind of hard to pick just a few to honor. I think we had 44 nominations over the year of employees going above and beyond and being recognized for their efforts in serving their fellow staff, but also serving the citizens of the community in many a variety of different ways. So, I enjoy doing that. There should be a public press release coming out with who received the awards here in the very near future. So, again, my kudos to the staff and the great work that they do on a regular basis. I don't have anything else to report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Harold. If there's no questions, we will move on to item number five on the agenda, that's the city attorney's report. Stephanie?
Mayor, members of the council, I submitted a written report, and I can stand for questions on the same at this time.
Are there any questions for Steph? Any questions? No, thank you, Steph. Moving on to item number six on the agenda, that's consent. This time, we have 19 items on the consent agenda. I've been asked, there are none that are being pulled, so now is the time, if there's any items on the consent agenda that need to be pulled, please let us know. If there is nothing to be pulled, what are the wishes of the council? Move approval. We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Steve, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padja Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to action items, item 7.1, emergency purchase of a fuel farm jet pump, jet A pump. What are the wishes of the council? Move approval. We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Steve?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to compliment city staff for moving very quickly on this. It's obviously incapacitated our airport, and normally it's important to jump through all the hoops for purchases, but given the exigent nature of the circumstances, I think this is very well justified and showed a lot of initiative on their part.
I concur. Any other comments? If not, the motion is to approve, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padja Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to item 7.2, the Project B and Broadway Circle actions, what are the wishes of the council?
Move to, move the five items under recommended action forward.
There's six.
Is there six now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, six, I still have the five.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. Motion by Carrie to approve, a second by Steve. This time, I'll turn it over to Harold for an update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I assume this will be a topic of some conversation this evening. This has been a project up to even within the last hour, the most updated drafts of the agreement are updated on the city's website. If anyone wants to access those, those changed even as recent as 15 minutes before the meeting started. I will also state that the Project B Board is having a special council meeting tonight, probably even during this council meeting. So, any action of the council I recommend be pending approval of the Project B Board. In essence, what we've done is, Project B has run into some challenges here over the recent weeks, and it's been a determination of city staff that they will not be able to fulfill their commitments that are outlined in the subrecipient agreements with the city. The subrecipient agreements tie to the federal funding that we've received supporting this project. There's three different funding points from the federal government, so each one has a separate agreement. So, that outlines the three subrecipient agreements that are referred to in the potential mutual termination agreement in front of the council this evening. The goal of city staff and has been over the last several weeks is to try and find a way to keep this project moving forward on behalf of the community and help the city meet its obligations with the federal government so that we can continue to be eligible to receive federal funding on multiple projects, including projects that aren't included with this Project B or Broadway Circle project. So, with that, in essence, what we're asking is we mutually terminate our subrecipient agreements with Project B. Again, that's pending their board approval this evening. The city would then potentially take ownership of the property tomorrow. We would schedule a closing date of the property, the existing property would revert back to ownership of the city. Also, here is an assignment of the Mattson Construction contract to the city, so that would remove that from Project B, and then the city would be able to make direct payments to Mattson Construction. And the numbers and figures are outlined in the memo this evening. Ultimately, it's about $890,000 remaining on the contract, and then another $400-plus thousand dollars in contingency funds as we continue to complete the construction of the family homeless shelter and the low to moderate income housing, which would consist of 17 units. It also includes an assignment at the EAPC contract. EAPC was the company that designed the buildings and the remodel, and also we're under contract for doing construction management to make sure that everything was built in accordance with design, and there are some remaining funds on that. And then authorization for the mayor and finance director to execute all necessary agreements pending council approval, as well as the Project B Board approval. We do have signed agreements from Mattson Construction and EAPC with regards to those assignments and those contracts. Included with the Project B termination agreement would also be an assignment of the leases of Oshie Ramen and the Lord's Cupboard that are currently in the building. Those leases would come over to the city. Any lease payments on that would be revenue to the city, which would be considered program income underneath the federal guidelines to go towards costs associated with that building and that project. And then we're also asking that, given that time is of the essence and to keep Mattson Construction and the subcontractors working as quickly as possible, we are asking for an exception to be allowed to make payments in accordance with the contracts and agreements so that we can get them caught up and paid to work done as of date and can have confidence in continuing to work on the project moving forward. So, we'd ask for permission to be able to make those payments, even though typically it would require a second reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I'm sure the council has at this time.
Any questions? Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's next, as far as the project? Is the city going to run a family homeless shelter, or?
No. So, the main focus right now is getting construction to completion. That's been our primary focus. We've been talking with representatives from HUD as well. We will likely have to go through a process to find a new subrecipient, and we will talk to potential subrecipients in the future so that hopefully someone else is coming and doing that, and that will be handled either through a potential lease with those tenants or a potential sale. Some of that will depend on what the interest is. The ideal scenario would be is to have someone purchase those out and operate all three But if not, then the city may have to lease those out and parcel out operation of those to different subrecipients. So, for example, if someone was only interested in doing the family homeless shelter, easiest path forward maybe is to lease them the facility, and then they would operate it. But those are things that'll come out through the RFP in the future. And pending action tonight, that'll be the next thing that staff will be focusing on is beginning the process to do that. I will state publicly, we've had, we've had a numerous amount of meetings regarding this over the last several weeks. I want to express my gratitude to the city staff that have been involved with that, including coming in on vacation time during the holidays and those kinds of things. You know, the city attorney's been working on documents over the weekends, those kinds of things, trying to get this completed in a timely fashion and moving forward. So, time has been of the essence, a lot of hard work. But again, we've been, we've had some meetings with HUD. HUD has told us that the actions that the city is taking and the recommendations that we have before you this evening are appropriate and what they would expect in a situation and a scenario like this, and continues to maintain their confidence that we will allocate and utilize the funds that they've given us in an appropriate manner.
So. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, and Harold, if you don't mind, I have prepared a little bit of a statement about this, and I have some questions in there afterwards and built within to it. I've not spoken up here on this dais about the news of what has happened and kind of what broke the week before Christmas. I want to begin this tonight by acknowledging the work that Harold just talked about, that the state staff have put into this, to getting us to where we are tonight. This wasn't the job anybody wanted, but circumstances pushed you into it, and everybody has done a great job of handling this with extreme professionalism. I want to state that I'm angry about this situation, and I'm going to work really hard as I'm, and that's part of the reason I wrote all this down tonight, not to lose my cool or not to respond in a way that's inappropriate while I'm up here tonight. I want to thank all the community volunteers and nonprofits and funders who stepped up late last year and served people experiencing homelessness during the time of closure of Project B. It was the best of our community and something positive in a horrible situation. I've been involved personally with bringing the family homeless shelter to Minnet since I first attended a meeting on December 6th, 2014. In the early days of those meetings, the discussion was about how important it was to find a local nonprofit that'll dictate, dedicate themselves to running a family homeless shelter. Shortly after that point, I, my son, who was in middle school at that time, had a friend who became homeless. This was a family of six, and the only option that they had at that time was for children under age of 12 to go to the women's shelter, and men over the age of 18 to go to the men's shelter. The teenage boys had no place to go. The worst thing that you could do to a family at a time like that was to divide them up, but there was no choice. Now, here we are nine years later, and we still don't have a solution for families who are homeless. This is unacceptable, and we must do better. In the early days of those discussions, it was understood that a local nonprofit would need to step up. However, nobody did. Eventually, LSS of North Dakota stepped in, and it was never a great fit, but it worked and it got the project going forward. Then LSS of North Dakota went bankrupt. It did not go bankrupt because of It did not go bankrupt because of the project in Minot, but the people of Minot were stuck paying for their results and their bad decisions and their poor fiscal management. However, the opportunity arose from that situation, and Project B stepped up to take over management. There's an important part of the story that I feel will get lost because of everything that follows. However, I think it is important to recognize a key distinction and the importance of Project B stepping up. When they did, they became the first organization in Minot to follow industry-accepted best practices of providing low-barrier housing. I am angry because that has failed, not because there was a problem with the project or because of a lack of a need for family homeless shelter. It failed once again because of fiscal mismanagement of an organization. There are many levels to this. A majority of our time tonight, as it already has been, will be spent talking about the contractors who are victims of this mismanagement. And they are. We'll discuss in rightfully so about how the taxpayers of Minot are victims of this mismanagement, because we are. However, this project has always been about helping some of the most vulnerable people in our community, people who make use of the Lord's Cupboard, people who need LMI housing, and people, families who are homeless. They are all victims of this mismanagement, and I'm angry about it. But what we have to do is right for everybody involved. We have to step in and save this project. However, the city of Minot should not be in the business of providing homeless services. That is a role for our nonprofit sector. I would like to suggest that a community advisory committee or something like that be set up to oversee the eventual transition of Broadway Circle to a new nonprofit. This committee should consist of city staff, veteran nonprofit leadership, members of this board or this council, and representatives from possible funding sources, including those with a deep understanding of state and federal homeless funding sources, representatives from lending organizations and others. I suggest this because after what happened with LSS and with Project B, just being a nonprofit with a great mission and good intentions is not good enough. I suggest this committee be assigned with the following responsibilities. One, to ensure that the nonprofit has programmatic abilities to manage a family homeless shelter and to meet all the HUD requirements. Two, to ensure that the future nonprofit has the financial abilities to succeed as a family homeless shelter and an LMI housing provider. Next is to ensure that nonprofit has in place the proper financial controls and separation of duties to ensure the fiscal integrity of the overall project. Next, to ensure that the board of directors consists of people with diverse skill sets to engage in the proper financial and programmatic planning and decision-making, and to ensure the leadership of the nonprofit is qualified. Finally, and I say this as a person who is part of the nonprofit sector and a person who is an elected alderman, it's time for the nonprofit sector in Minot to step up. Minot needs a coordinated group of nonprofit, government agencies, churches, businesses, and citizens who are dedicated to assisting the needs of people experiencing homelessness of all ages. We need a group to promote and encourage solving homelessness for everybody, including people who are struggling with addiction, mental health, people from historically marginalized populations, people with criminal backgrounds, people who are part of the LGBTQIA communities, people who are chronically homeless, and people who have been helped before. We are here today because of the mismanagement of two nonprofit organizations, LSS and Project B, and the situation is made worse by a lack of a coordinated community effort. It's a community-wide failure, and we have to do better.
Thank you, Scott. Any other comments or questions? I do want to bring up the pending approval as a friendly amendment. All of the approval, your motion, Carrie, to kind of coincide with what Harold said, pending approval of Project B.
From the Project B board.
Is there any objection to having that added? Okay. Any further discussion? Harold?
There's a couple other points I wanted to make real quick that I thought of during the statement. First and foremost, the money we received from the federal government was to go towards construction. None of the city's funds was going towards operation. So the city's city staff, CPSM, or I guess CDM Smith, I should say, and EAPC have been working on monitoring and making sure that all throughout this process that we were receiving documentation, proper processes and procedures were being followed, and those kinds of things throughout the entirety. I will also state that in our conversations with representatives from HUD, the question was asked that once the projects are completed and constructed, what timeline requirements are there from HUD that we have a subrecipient in place to actually operate these? And the response from HUD at that time is there is no timeline. Given these funds were given to us for construction, the city's goal right now is to get it constructed and completed. That will satisfy our compliance with the federal government with the funding that we've gotten. And then we have to make a good faith effort to move forward to find a new subrecipient or a new operator for these programs as soon as we can. But there is no specific timeline or deadline from the federal government in order to accomplish that.
Scott?
Harold, what is the expected timeline of the completion of construction?
I believe, if I remember correctly in our conversation with Mattson Construction, I think it's still on pace for September of this year. Is that correct?
October.
October, October of this year? We would anticipate with approval of council tonight that we'd be able to move forward and buildings B and C, which would be the family homeless shelter and the LMI housing, would be turned over to the city and available as of October of this year. Building A is already complete. Lord's Cupboard has moved in. There is still some commercial space there available for renting out.
Mark?
Just one other thought or question is with our actions tonight, is there any further action in the future that's contemplated or likely with regard to Project B?
Debating what to say and how to say it. That would be determined in potential future council action on whether or not, if there's any funding that comes available, if we take any actions to recoup any of those funding. And if the council wanted to take those actions in the future, we do try to write the termination contract that left that door open for the city and for the council, if that's what you would like to do at that time. But pending that, this agreement would officially sever the subrecipient agreements. Project B would no longer be a part of the process, and all payments would go pretty much straight from Mattson Construction to the city, which would then be, again, reviewed by our teams of EAPC, CDM Smith, and our city staff, and making sure that everything is compliant and going where it needs to go.
Paul?
Yeah. Again, I think we touched on a couple times some of the commercial property that's attached to this. And obviously, we've gone through three, or two, excuse me, two different operators for this. Excuse me. And it hasn't been successful. Has there been discussion on getting out of the real estate game and maybe parceling out the commercial property from the family homeless shelter and maybe filling the coffers with what the taxpayers are on the hook for? Because it's, you know, it's a parcel right on Broadway. I'm sure worth a pretty penny. I haven't done a deep dive into it, but has that been part of the discussion moving forward is to get that back into the private sector and maybe not make this as big of a financial hit to the community?
It has been discussed and contemplated. We've thought about that. That would be easier to do with building A. The question will be is what are the financial resources whoever comes forward to operate the family homeless shelter and the LMI housing? And do they need the potential income off of the commercial building to help subsidize those? That'll be conversations for the future as we go through the RFP process, who's interested in what and how. But ultimately, my goal is to get this off of the city's plate as quickly and as soon as possible, and only to take on whatever role is necessary at the minimum. I mean, ultimately, the city was always supposed to be a pass-through for this. We were access to the federal funding for this. We never wanted to own the buildings or be responsible for them, but we do have an obligation because we are the pass-through from the federal funds to make sure that we complete that. And that's what staff is focused on. And again, we can look at alternatives in the future of how that is no longer in the city's portfolio, and staff has an interest of not having the responsibility of operating a homeless shelter or even an LMI housing apartment unit or even commercial property that is arguably profitable.
Steve?
Thank you. I had two questions. I guess the first is a procedural one. You mentioned that there has been public discussion and concern about this, and I was wondering if you were planning on giving the public a chance to offer their input at this point, if there were anybody in the audience who wants to do that.
We certainly could, I guess, if there's no objection, if there's anybody who wishes to address this issue from the chamber. Please step forward, state your name.
Good evening. My name's Rob Fuller. I have some concerns about the proposed bailout for this whole thing that we've been talking about here tonight. Initially envisioned, this project has faced numerous challenges, including cost overruns, delays, and two nonprofit organizations who couldn't meet their financial goal and objectives with this project already. I understand why you guys feel the need to bail this out so we can continue to get federal funding from the government, but there's many reasons why we shouldn't put this on the taxpayers. I mean, you guys talked about, you've had some discussions and you've asked for no input from the city or from, I'm sorry, from the taxpayers. You know, you guys are making decisions on how to spend our money, our taxes, that we've paid in without any input from us. Now, I understand that this project is important to the city of Minot, and I'm not saying it isn't something that needs to be done, but I don't believe it's something that needs to be done on the taxpayer's dime. You know, you talked about transparency and having discussions. Where is the public discussion about why these two entities failed? Why have we not brought in people from the taxpayers to talk about this? Why haven't you guys give us detailed explanations as to what's going on? Why do we have Lutheran Social Services who lost, you know, went bankrupt and everything? We were doing that with them, and then Project B came in and they failed. Why aren't we hearing why this is all going on? You know? Who's going to run the project? Like Paul asked, is the city going to be in charge of running a homeless shelter? You know, you guys say, no, the objective is to find somebody else to run it. Who's going to run it? Have we had any discussions with any other nonprofits that are interested in running any of these aspects of this business? And if we can't find anybody to run it, then what? Then it is on the city. And how are we going to pay for it? Has that been discussed? I mean, you guys want to spend $1.32 million, whatever it is, but there's no discussion about what could happen if we can't find anybody to run it down the road? How much more is it going to cost us? You want to take the money from our general fund, which is mainly our property taxes. What happens if we can't find anybody to run it? Then how are we going to support it? You're going to raise our property taxes more, whether it be through the mills or through the assessed value. So it's back on the taxpayers again. You know, for the last eight years, I have watched this city continuously go to the well and take property tax to pay for pet projects and bad deals like the parking garages and other things like that that we shouldn't have to pay for. It's really kind of heartbreaking in a way to watch these things happen in this city. Now, again, I realize we need a homeless shelter, and we need places for people that are homeless and everything else, but it isn't the taxpayer's job. And again, I'm sorry, as a taxpayer, that you guys are having to deal with this, but why should it be our responsibility to bail them out? It makes zero sense. Now, secondly, every economic and social benefit that that project has needs to be thoroughly evaluated for us as the taxpayers. You know, a comprehensive cost-benefit analysis to show us, to assess whether the project actually justifies this investment from us. I mean, we've gotten nothing. You guys have, you've been talking behind closed doors and having meetings and working hard, and I appreciate that as a taxpayer. But I don't appreciate that we're not hearing anything about it. We heard last week that you guys now are bringing this up to want us to fund it, and then here we are voting on it tonight without any input at all from the citizens out there that are paying these taxes, that you guys are going to take this money and spend. I mean, you know, I was a banker for 17 years, and there was a term or a phrase we used, throwing good money after bad money. And that's what we're trying to do here. And we did that once already as a city with the parking garages, didn't we? Have we not learned our lesson? I mean, it doesn't make any sense at all other than to make sure we continue to receive our federal funds. What about if we say, hey, you know what? This isn't going to work. We've had our issues. Let the money go back to the federal government and then have whoever wants to come in and pick this up reapply for the federal grants. Would that hurt the project at all? I mean, I realize you guys feel like it has to be done in a certain timeframe, and we need to get this done so other projects can receive their federal funding. But this is just insane to say, hey, let's put this on the city or on the taxpayers, take it out of the general fund, and then in a year, we'll figure out if this actually, if we can find somebody to work on it or not or to run it for us. I mean, we got to have better answers than that, guys, really. I mean, and to sit here after five days, like I said, this came out last week in the newspaper, five days later, you guys are going to take a vote on it without asking anybody in this community what we think? Shame on you guys. Shame on you all. That's all I got.
Any other comments?
If I could respond.
Can I respond?
Hang on.
Go ahead.
Any other comments? Carrie or Steve? Who wanted first? Carrie?
I just want to say, I find it, you know, for the thousand people who, on any given night, are experiencing homelessness in this city and comparing this to parking garages and doing this to keep federal funds is a bunch of bullshit. This is about people not having a roof over their head and experiencing the streets and the record-breaking temperatures we had a few weeks ago and not having a place to go. And that's what this is about. And I can speak confidently for everybody of this dais that that is the primary goal of what we are doing, and it's not to keep HUD happy. It is not to, you know, bail somebody out. This is our human beings. These are the same people that we stepped up in 2011 and helped when people lost their homes in the flood. And we didn't think twice about that because that's who we are as a community. And that is who we are as a council, is taking care of our most vulnerable people. And it doesn't feel good. This was not a project we set out to take on, but here we are. And I, for one, am not going to let the people experiencing homelessness get involved in a political debate about whether it's right or not for us to help these people.
Steve? Well, I guess I just wanted to make two comments more procedurally. First of all, I'm a little taken aback by the comment that of you guys, we're seven individual people here, we're not part of some coalition or party or faction. And I would appreciate it if you addressed us either as the council, not you guys. We are not one monolithic entity. We're not one party. We're not a group trying to run for something. The second comment I'd make would be that I asked the mayor to open up the meeting for public input. So your comments, sir, that there has been no transparency, your request for input from the public is categorically false. I was the one who gave you, who asked the mayor to give you a chance or anyone else to speak, and I'd appreciate some credit to the council for that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Lisa?
I would just add that, yes, this information has been out in the public for five days. I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but I have not heard anything from anyone regarding it.
Thank you. Harold?
I'd also remind the council and the public that there's an active investigation going on with this. So city staff isn't, this is an issue that Project B is working through. We have one aspect of their commitments and their operations because of their contracts and agreements with the city, but we don't have comprehensive oversight over Project B. And they're working with appropriate authorities. I don't know if they will disclose everything to us as a city. They've disclosed what they've needed to with regards to our agreements and our contracts and their ability to deliver on those. But there's a lot of other actions going on with this, including an active investigation by BCI that isn't appropriate to be out publicly right now until that has determined what's fact and what's not and what actions are going to be taken with regards to that. And the city will not have much of a party to that. It's not our staff or our organization that's going through that right now. What we're trying to do is we're trying to minimize the previous commitments here, and we've been transparent with what information is appropriate to be transparent with to the best that we can. And, you know, again, we're trying to fulfill the previous commitments and get this project to fruition and to completion. I don't think- I don't think we're asking a lot. Yes, I would prefer that the city is not using reserves to finish this project out, but we also have reserves in place for emergencies and unforeseen circumstances. And I think the city, both current and previous councils, have done a good job of building a fairly healthy reserve for situations just like this. And, anyway, I'll leave my comments to that for now.
Steve?
Yeah, I wanted, this is more of a substantive comment, I wanted to clarify two things. I guess the first question is, you know, we're a million and three short somehow. Is that something that we were expecting Project B to come up with, or is there some concern that the money was misallocated or perhaps misspent? Because when we first got this 82 million dollar grant, five years ago or something, we applied for, it was a very lengthy community process with lots of input from people as to how we might use the money to recover from the flood, and how to make the community more resilient to further future disasters and eventualities. And there was a lot of justification, I think, at that point, a lot of study, a lot of discussion as to why these were the priorities the city chose in its grant, and we got a very favorable grant from the federal government, very favorable consideration. And, so some of that, you know, public input occurred a long time ago. But I guess I'm just wondering about the source of the discrepancies. Somehow, the project is a million and three short, and I guess I'm wondering if we can speak somewhat publicly, maybe discreetly, to that. Was there not enough money budgeted for this originally? Or, I mean, from what we've been presented, it sounds like bills weren't being paid to contractors, and I don't think it's a real mistake not to stiffen rather workers who have put in labor and not pay them for their work. But can you clarify a little bit better, Harold, where the 1.3 is coming from?
So, before we would allow Project B to enter into their construction contract with Matson Construction, we required an identification of where all the revenues were coming to be able to pay that contract. We weren't gonna let them enter into a contract that they did not have money identified and obligated to be able to move forward. If you recall, it was bid out, it came in significantly more than what the engineer's estimate was.
Okay, so that's part of it?
That was part, well, not yet. So, in that process, there was a difference of a significant amount of money. The city went through a process of a substantial amendment to provide an additional 1.7 million dollars for the project. We used their low-to-moder income housing from allocation one and moved that and got HUD approval to move that towards this project.
Again, from federal funds?
From federal funds. The other substantial funder that Project B had lined up was funding from the county through their ARPA funds, to the tune of about 1.38 million, towards this project. And then they had a series of other donations and commitments that they had in place, that when we added all that up, was sufficient to meet the needs of the contract. We gave them approval to move forward. I think the challenge is, is that, again, the city's funds have gone where they need to go. Some of those other funds that Project B was responsible for and had committed went to other things, and that contributed some towards, a significant portion towards the shortfall that we have now. And then in addition, there was probably close to a couple hundred thousand dollars in change orders, right?
And that's expected.
That weren't complicated, or weren't accounted for at the beginning, which is not uncommon. It's, you know, we usually budget a 10% to 15% contingency on projects like this. We did with City Hall when we were doing it. And, you know, those change orders were well within line of what would be normal and typical of a construction project of this size and scope. So there was no red flags with regards to that. Again, each change order was vetted through EAPC, CDM Smith, city staff, you know, those kinds of things. But it was always the obligation for Project B to identify the revenues to pay for those change orders. So, a combination of funds that were committed to this project being spent on potentially other things, and the change orders is what combined for that $890,000 shortfall. And then, again, staff is asking for another 400,000 plus to be in place for contingency as we complete construction of the homeless shelter and the LMI housing apartment complex, so that way we have money identified and allocated that we can complete that project and within budget. And I hope to spend as little of that contingency funding as possible. Staff continues to look for other funding mechanisms and grants and those kinds of things that can be dedicated to this project to continue to minimize the city's commitment and the citizens' taxpayers' commitment towards this. Staff continues to do what we can to minimize that as much as possible. But the bulk of this, the lion's share of this, is being paid for with federal dollars, whether it comes from allocations that the city had and applied for, or whether it was the ARPA funds from the county.
Yes, just to make sure I understand this, because this is a significant issue. We've fulfilled our end of the bargain. We provided the money as it passed through from the federal government. We acted in good faith. We expected that Project B would be able to come up with their share of the funding. Some of it the county stepped in with, but Project B was unable to come up with their share of the funding. There were some added expenses, which as you say, is normal in any large project, but basically, the primary cause was that the other party in this wasn't able to, or chose not to, or whatever, for whatever set of reasons, unable to come up with their share of the funding, which we expected.
That's an accurate assessment.
Thank you, I wanted to be sure I understood that. The second question I had had to do with if there's any additional funding from either the big CDBG grant of some 83 million dollars that we got a few years ago as a result of this lengthy process, or in any anticipated grants that we may be getting from the federal government. I understand that because of our population, we will be eligible for more federal programs in this area. Is there anything in the pipeline that might help ease the shock to us and the taxpayers?
So, with regards to the three allocations the city's received for multiple projects throughout the community, all of that funding has been obligated. We've been in the process of trying to close out projects. That includes the CTE project downtown, that includes Project B, and a couple other LMI housing projects throughout the community that are underway and we're trying to close out and finish out. There is no more money to allocate towards any project like that. When the city did the substantial amendment to dedicate that last 1.7 million towards Project B, that was the last of the funding that the city had available to allocate to any additional project.
So, the 83 million is gone at this point?
All of that money has been spoken for and allocated and is in process of being spent. With regards to additional funds, the city was just designated as an entitlement community. We expect sometime during this calendar year that we will begin getting that funding allocated to the city. As part of our conversations with HUD, we have inquired about whether or not that money would be available to apply towards this project. It is possible. Staff is still weighing through whether or not, just because we could, whether we should, and whether or not that creates any other complications that we may not wish to have at this time, or whether that's feasible to work. So, again, city staff continues to find ways to have other funding mechanisms in place other than simply reserves. We are asking the council to approve reserves tonight, but staff is working diligently to try and minimize how much of that is actually used at the end of the day. And then in addition, any program income off of those properties can be applied towards these costs and these expenses. So, for example, the lease revenues and those kinds of things, once the city has those leases under any of our responsibility, those are funds that can be dedicated towards this that can help minimize some of these costs out.
If I recall correctly, I've heard that we might be in the line to receive something like 400,000 dollars from this new entitlement city status. Is that correct?
That's in the ballpark of the current estimate, yes.
So, that would substantially cut into what we're having to fork over right now?
It would, but in addition, that also prolongs any opportunity to put that money towards other objectives and program needs in the future.
Right.
But that'll be a decision of the council, potentially, at some point in the future.
And then the final question I have, I think for now at least, is this issue of who's going to run it. I'm comfortable with the notion of, you know, following through on our commitments, especially the federal government. We need to pay people who put work into this, the contractors, the subcontractors. I certainly don't want to run afoul of the federal government. That's the last thing you want, if you, in any kind of business or government activities, to have the feds breathing down your neck, or blackballing you, blacklisting you. But I think it is a very legitimate question in terms of who will operate this once it's built. Can you give us any reassurance about that, or can flesh out any better the concerns a lot of us have? And part of the reason I mentioned this too, and it's maybe hard to respond, because I used to work for, or not for, but with Lutheran Social Services, the original agency that contracted to provide this, back quite a few years ago. I spent about 10 years consulting with them, and they were, to be honest with you, the Cadillac of social service agencies, not just in our city or in our state, but in the whole region. And I was just stunned that they closed their doors overnight. They went bankrupt subsequently. You know, it was an unthinkable thing, you know, men here for over 100 years, if I remember correctly. I mean, they were rock solid. I mean, the thought that LSS would be gone is just unbelievable. And like you say, Project B stepped in, you know, whether their board exercised adequate oversight or not, I don't know if there were so many improprieties, who knows yet at this point. But, you know, I think it's important that the city not take too much blame for it. I mean, if you can't rely on Lutheran Social Services and the Lutherans, who can you rely on? And certainly, Project B used to be the YMCA. Our kid went to daycare there, to childcare. My wife used to be on the board 30 years ago of the YWCA. Why they changed her name is beyond me, but it's their business. But this, again, was a settled, established organization that was an affiliate of a very important, very good national organization. Maybe that's where part of their problems came from, as they split off, but anyway.
I have any answers for you.
Thank you.
Carrie?
In Project B's defense, one of the reasons they did, I think, correctly separate from the YMCA was because they were committed to being a low-barrier, no-barrier shelter, and the national YMCA is not, and would not allow them to be. So, they
That helps, thank you.
They did what they needed to do to serve the people how they wanted to serve them. And as for who's gonna do this, everything's on the table, Steve. The nonprofit community of Minot is certainly, you know, working very hard on this. A new nonprofit could arise, there's existing nonprofits, but, you know, leaders like, you know, Jill McDonald and others who stepped in to immediately make sure that nobody was left in the cold, literally, when the shelter closed, are working diligently on figuring that out. So, there's not an answer, there's not like a likely, you know, organization right now like, oh, this one. But, you know, this is something that is very important to the community and to our nonprofit leaders, and I'm fully confident that we're gonna either identify and have a nonprofit step forward, or one will be formed that can competently and responsibly do this job.
That makes me feel better, thank you.
Again, in response to Alderman Pardagula's original question about, you know, potential operation later on down the road, again, I want to reiterate, there's two aspects to this whole issue. The first one being construction, the second one being operation. Our federal funding, and what we're focused on right now is getting the construction piece complete. I think when this originated with LSS and those kinds of things, there was not sufficient federal funding dedicated to this to cover even the complete construction costs. Right? So, my hope, whether naive or not, is that if we can get it to construction, we're taking off some of that financial commitment of organizations that may not be able to capitalize and bring that money to bear to complete construction, because they're struggling to even get the money to operate. Right? So, my hope is, is that if we can get it to construction, we can do the RFP process, we can try to find potentially a new sub-recipient, and maybe there'll be a little bit deeper pool, because they don't have to worry about building the building and coming up with that financial resources to do that. They can focus simply on operating and bringing the resources to bear for operations. Again, and I'll say this publicly, it is not my intent to have the city operate these facilities. My goal is to get them constructed and find someone else. My preference would be is to sell it to somebody else. And Plan B would be is to lease it to someone else, if necessary. But the goal is to not have this continue to be a taxpayer-funded operation.
I have a question for you.
Carrie?
There seems to be some confusion. Does the building itself, with Lord's Cupboard and stuff, is the certificate of occupancy actually issued, or is it still under a conditional?
My understanding is the Lord's Cupboard has a full occupation permit.
Okay.
There's nothing else, just a few final thoughts. Oh, I'm, go ahead, Scott.
Sorry, I was waiting.
No, go ahead.
I just want to say, reiterate some of the other things that were set up here. First off, I would hope the city does everything to turn over, to look under every rock, do everything we can to get as little of this money to come out of reserves, or to recoup it at a later date, whether it be through sales, whether it be through whatever it takes. I don't want to have one dime of city dollars go to this, it doesn't need to go to it. I also want to say that I appreciate the fact that we are moving forward with getting this done. Originally, in 2014, there was, or whenever this original grant finally was approved, there was a lot more money in there, but money doesn't go as far as it used to. And with all the cost overruns and everything else, it's where it is now. We don't want to continue to push this on to the future, because if we've learned any lesson the last few years, the best time to have completed a project like this was about five years ago. So, let's get this thing done, let's get it through the finish line. But, the other thing I just want to final say at the end here is, again, thank you to the staff. This wasn't the battle anybody wanted, this wasn't the work anybody wanted to do, and as we're spending time on this issue that came to us, it means we're having less effort to do on other things that we want to be doing. That's extraordinarily frustrating, but we need to do what has to be done and to move forward. So, thank you to the staff that have worked so hard on this.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, council members, for your words. You know, we're required by the state of North Dakota to have reserves, to have so many dollars in reserves for like a rainy day, and I know one of the council members said that. So, we've got that, okay? And the bottom line, at the end of the day, what I see is we're getting an $8 million asset for 1.3 million dollars. Right? That's one thought. A second thought is, the reason we're moving so fast, if anybody's been in the construction business, you know, and I see we have Mr. Matson out here, you know, if you let a project sit idle and walk off the job, it goes backwards very quickly, and it deteriorates. Our mission is to get this to the finish line, get it completed, so it can stand and be an asset for another organization that wants to come up. We have had discussions, preliminary discussions, with organizations that are looking at it, that are interested in it. But we can't move forward until that is in our hands, and that's where we're at. I often, you know, since this all came down, I've been a part of a number of these meetings. Not nearly as many as Harold and Dave Lakefield and the finance staff, Brian and his team, not Chris, Mr. Plank back there, not Ben. We're in the process, okay? We're trying to do business as usual, and now all of a sudden, we're pulling serious assets, serious employee-staff time to get this to the finish line. It reminds me, it reminds me 100%, if you haven't read it, I challenge you, before you go to sleep tonight, read the quote by Teddy Roosevelt, "The man in the arena," and that's exactly what we're dealing with tonight. So, I want to thank the staff publicly for the time, the extra effort in getting this to where we are today, and hopefully, with the vote of the council tonight, it's going to push it forward. We're gonna get this done, and we're gonna find an organization to take it over and move this forward to make Minot a better community. Call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Pardagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Erling Game?
Moving on to item 7.3 on the agenda, that's the water main improvements procurement waiver. What are the wishes of the council?
Little approval.
We have a motion by Lisa, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mark. Discussion. Is Jason here?
Jason's here.
Do you want to just come up, Jason, and maybe explain this a little bit? Give us some background on it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so, we've been in the design process on these projects for the past couple of months. We have a consultant on board, and it came to our attention, probably the latter part of last week, that some of the materials on this project, since they're gonna be, we're applying for state revolving fund dollars, they'll require to be following some of the Build America
to be following some of the Build America, Buy America clauses that are in the infrastructure bill that was passed back in 2021. So what we found out mid last week was that lead time on these certain materials is about 18 weeks. And our project's probably not going to be ready to go up for bid until probably the middle, beginning part of March. So we're just trying to get those materials on order so they can be here so we can start a project as early in our construction season as possible.
Any questions, Jason? Any question? Thank you, Jason. Steve?
And if I recall correctly, we've done something, I guess, in the past, there was something about, I think, was it something with water, was it valves or something we pre-ordered before construction or before even bids were let because we just couldn't let the opportunity pass by financially?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Padraig Gula, correct. If it wasn't last year, it was probably the year before. I think it was a similar deal. It was probably more due to some of the supply chain issues that we had a couple of years ago. And again, we got them on orders early as we can, and then it becomes an owner-supplied part of the project. And it usually works out pretty well.
So we're trying to be flexible and innovative here?
Definitely.
Thank you, Jason. Any further discussion?
Harold?
Just a comment real quickly on why this is on the agenda. So again, city staff tries to follow the policies for procuring and contracting that the council's put in place. And just to be fully transparent and make sure that everything was fully aware, we put it on the agenda tonight because it was in a gray area. And we figured that we would default to transparency and letting the council make the decision. And so the public could be fully aware. So I just wanted to make that comment that this is on the agenda tonight for transparency specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Janser?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we are moving on to item number eight on the agenda, and that's personal appearances. Now is the opportunity for those who wish to address the council to come forward. We would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes out of respect for others who wish to speak to the council.
There you go. Yep.
That's nice.
Mayor Ross, council members, January 31st, I saw what is to be a temporary fix for the north door entrance. Thank you. It did not meet ADA requirements for occupancy when the building was given occupancy April 23. In my, in my opinion, compassion we are to have for one another has become a civil rights law. And still those laws are not honored, even by the city, our city. We say the Pledge of Allegiance, and God we trust. The Americans with Disability Act was passed July 1992. The latest ADA standards for accessible design were published by the DOJ from the federal government September 2010, replacing the DOJ's original 1991 ADA standards. From the notes at the September 22 roundtable on issues impacting the disabled communities, Brian Billingsley, Community and Economic Development Director, discussed his department's process with inspections and permits on new construction. Luke Tolema is the point of contact. Plans will not get permit until they are ADA compliant. Occupancy permits will not be given until the city has checked for ADA compliance. What this means is the building will not be moved into. Brian said that in his time with the city, he is not aware of any complaints from builder, architects, et cetera, on ADA compliance issues. Is the remodel of this building for City Hall completed April 2023 the first? Because City Hall did not meet ADA requirements for occupancy, did it get a temporary permit for occupancy? How long was it for? Is the city participating by the same laws that it enforces? Lance Meyer stated January 5th, 2024, the site work on the north side of the building, such as the concrete, in question was not part of the City Hall project. So no one was looking for it, designing for it, or inspecting it. We didn't know it was an issue until you brought it to our attention. Now the sidewalk we are, we have been discussing is being treated just like any other sidewalk complaint we receive. I didn't, I did not make a sidewalk complaint. I addressed an ADA requirement for the threshold on the north door. During the City Hall remodel construction, the door frame of the north door entrance was replaced. An ADA push button was installed. ADA bathrooms were added and to be used by the public provided by City Hall. This is not a sidewalk complaint. It's an ADA requirement for occupancy that was not met. That Lance Meyer turned an ADA requirement for occupancy into a sidewalk complaint is no less offensive than Harold Stewart saying that at the October 2023 Roundtable on Issues Impacting the Disabled, that it was maybe a punchless item. When I addressed at the January 2024 Roundtable on Issues Impacting the Disabled Communities a week prior, as a guest, I was appalled by a few of Alderman Kerry Evans' responses. One was when she said, "I'm sorry, it's not up to your satisfaction, but the north door entrance is being fixed in the spring." I don't know what to tell you. She was disinterested in listening to what I had to say. I did not have an opportunity to address the communication that I had had with Lance and Alderman Padraig Gula at the beginning of January. She also said, "I can file a claim with the state, but it's going to take seven months. By then, it will be fixed." I told her I thought there was going to be a temporary fix. She was walking out as I was still talking. It was before the meeting was scheduled to end. She said she would reach out to Lance. I did receive a response back from her that night that concrete would be used until spring. The responsibility of inspectors is great and heavy. Perhaps there's something, some more training required or conversations needing to take place to understand why ADA requirements are being dismissed for them to not be dismissed. ADA requirements are the law, not a code to dictate importance for application.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Lance, could we have you step up? You are the project engineer on this or the project manager on this. With your experience in projects like this, are we, as far as you know, in compliance with ADA specifications?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as far as I know, yes. Our inspection team is top-notch. They know the ADA codes just like, just like they're written. So as part of their final, they will go through the building and make sure that what our architects have designed, which is to code, is actually what got built. I stand by my comments in the email regarding the sidewalk. Again, it's, they are two separate issues. When the architects design the front doors and those sort of things, they have no knowledge of any kind of sidewalk faults or issues that are out in the right of way because that wasn't their task to design. We weren't made aware of it until, you know, recently here, where some issues have popped up. We took a look at it. And over time, sidewalk has settled in front of the building just like it can settle anywhere in the public right of way. When someone makes us aware of that, you can call it a complaint, a concern, a tip, whatever you want to call it. That's how we handle it. We have people go out and look at it. We verify that it's an issue, and then we put it on a list to fix. So that's what we did.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now is your time, if you wish to address the council, now is your time to step forward and address the council. Seeing none, we will move on to item nine on the agenda. That is miscellaneous and discussion items. Item 9.1, Minot International Airport Forecast and Analysis. Jen, would you like
I believe Mr. Baum, Mike Baum, is online to give the presentation. He is currently subcontracting with DECOM Aviation Consulting to provide us a forecast of the airline industry and the impacts to our local community in the, in the coming future.
Yes, Mike, the mic is yours. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. Jennifer, who's going to be running the slideshow? You are?
I believe Jennifer Clean is in the back, and she's our
It might be best if he just shares his screen or
Can you share your screen, Mike? Do you have that capability? Are you on the phone?
Oh, I thought you guys, I sent it to you. Okay, give me a second here.
We have it up right now, if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. That would be easiest.
Okay.
All right. Thank you much. I've got, I've got two, a presentation here. One will speak to kind of some key trends in the industry that are impacting smaller airports such as Minot. Then in the second section, I go into a little bit on what we're looking at for calendar year 2024, which actually looks quite good. The industry piece is going to kind of speak to the challenges. There's five key ones. I'll try to go fairly quickly through this. Please stop me with questions or anything of that nature because there are a lot of, like any industry, abbreviations, acronyms that are unique to that industry that I just sometimes take for granted that people aren't from the same industry. So again, feel free to stop me. Why don't you move on next slide? Is there a glitch up there? Oops.
Mike, just need to give us one minute, Mike. We're working on it.
I had two. I could. There we go. This is just an overview of the presentation today. You can go to the next slide, which is just a breaker page that will speak to kind of the key industry trends post pandemic. There have been some. So next slide, please. The first key trend we're seeing is that it's probably been well documented, the pilot shortages within the airline industry. And they're primarily hitting the regional airlines that care to small markets like Minot. For example, when you're on a Delta Connection jet or United Express jet, those are regional airlines. And you can see from an industry perspective, the total capacity and total traffic is going to be up for this past year. Overall, it's really two different universes. The mainline carriers, that's the bigger jets, the 737s, the airbuses. They're actually been, have a nice little growth because the, they don't have any labor shortages in the pilot side where the regional airlines, as you can see, are down big. And again, that ties back to the pilot shortages. So that's kind of the number one key trend we're seeing. Next slide, please. The number two trend has been a shifting from business travel is still depressed versus what it was pre-COVID. And leisure traffic has been growing and remains growing throughout 2023, although that growth has slowed. In addition, a lot of these same markets have seen a lot of population growth with the migration to the Sun Belt in the United States. So this slide is just showing you the fastest growing airports in the country, 2023 versus 2019. As you can see, they're generally located in the southeast United States, in the mountain region, and select markets in the West Coast. Many of these are beach destinations and/or like wine country in the West Coast, and obviously ski destinations in the mountains. That's been kind of the number two trend, this growing leisure travel in Sun Belt markets, which tied to that. Next slide, please. As markets that have been getting hit hard have been losing traffic. These are the biggest declining markets, 2023 versus 2019. So a lot of these are business oriented. So you look in the West Coast, SJC is San Jose, California, which was among the three fastest growing airports for the prior decade. That's obviously Silicon Valley, with business travel depressed, they've seen big cuts. One that'll obviously be even towards the region here is Bismarck, BIS, up in North Dakota, obviously. The other part, besides business travels, government travel's been very slow in responding. I've done this slide a few times, and typically you'll see markets like Lansing, Michigan, on here, Madison, Wisconsin, Lincoln, Nebraska, a lot of state capitals. Business and government travel's been slowing returning. And that's been a definite trend in the industry. We think we're going to start to see some of these reverse, but they haven't yet. Next slide, please. Number three trend are the relative growth by airline. So you see Frontier, if you go to the left there, the big growing airlines, this is 2023 versus 2019, you see the Frontier Airlines, you see Spirit, Allegiant. These are all as known as ultra-low-cost carriers or ULCCs. They price very low. They fly nonstop to leisure destinations. I would imagine most of you are very familiar with Allegiant in the market. They've been growing. That will likely continue for the foreseeable future. Then if you go over to the far right on the graph, you're going to see markets like American, United, Delta. They've been reducing capacity over the last few years, and they probably will continue to grow relatively slower than the big ULCCs you see there on the left. So that's been the other part of that. That's been kind of a number three trend. This was in place before COVID, and it's going to continue probably now longer term. Next slide, please. The next trend we're seeing in the airline industry, and again, this is unique to about any business or industry in the United States right now, rising costs. And the airlines are being driven by just, labor's been the biggest increase. His pilot salaries are up about 40%. You're seeing big increases for all labor within the airlines, but also supply chains are getting stretched, and they're also have to pay more for maintenance and parts and what have you, and significantly higher operating costs. And just as an example, the graph here, and these are hard to see, I can tell, the 50-seat CRJ, which has flown a lot out of the Minot market for a number of years, the block hour costs there were just over $3,000. Now you're going to be looking at a larger aircraft, given industry trends with bigger planes, which I'm about to speak to, but also the costs are going up for that, too. So you're going to be looking at airline operating costs doubling here over about a three-year period. That's a pretty significant increase. And typically, when costs go up, that has a lot of ramifications, not the least of which will be airfares are going to have to go higher. Next slide, please. Tied to this, the trend to shift towards larger and larger aircraft as salaries and costs go up significantly, the smaller regional jets, whether it be the 50-seat variety or 76-seat regional jets, it's hard to stretch those costs over smaller aircraft types. So typically, that lends itself well to bigger and bigger aircraft, and you're seeing that now in the recent future. So if you go back over the last, say, 20 years, you typically would see aircraft gauge or seats per departure grow about one, maybe two seats a year. The last two years, it's gone up by seven seats and then eight seats. So it's gone up 15, 15 seats or a little over 10% in two years. And I think that's going to even get higher here over the next couple. So bigger planes are going to be the norm. So what's this mean? Go ahead and shift. So these are kind of the five key trends, none of which are good for smaller airports. High costs, bigger airplanes, growth to more larger leisure-oriented markets. So those are kind of tough for smaller mid-sized markets like a Minot is. Airfares are going higher. But again, these are kind of the challenges being faced by small and mid-sized markets today. And it's kind of, you know, it's going to be a difficult period probably going forward. With that said, let's go over the Minot situation today with the next slide. And I have one slide on 20, you can go to the next slide, one slide here on 2023, what we saw last year, and then I'll go into this next year, what we're looking at. So for 2023, by year-end, traffic was nearing 2019 levels, pre-COVID levels. And the cuts over the time have primarily come from Allegiant, who cut back their seasonal service to Phoenix Mesa, that's AZA, the acronym. And Las Vegas was down 28% a lot. So this was kind of counter to the industry trends where the ULCCs were growing, you were seeing cuts. And while Delta was up slightly, United was down, and again, that was tied to the pilot shortages. So 2023, you were down versus 2019, as were many small and mid-sized markets. But we're about to see reversal here. Why don't you go to the next slide, please? So this is what we're seeing right now in seat capacity out of Minot for January through July of this next year. We picked that time period because some of the airlines have not filed schedules from August through year-end yet, so we want to do an apples-to-apples comparison. As you can see, overall, seat capacity right now for the first seven months of the year is up almost 19%. That's 18.6%. That's a big number in today's industry. I will tell you that's particularly for an airport the size of Minot. And you can see, if you look closely, Allegiant's going to be up 90%, almost a doubling. And they're adding back the Phoenix service, the Phoenix Mesa service is coming back seasonally, where they eliminated it the last couple of years. And the Orlando service looks to be flying year-round at this point. I wouldn't be shocked if they pulled it back a little bit this fall, but it's still in the schedule today. United Airlines has added a frequency, and they're also adding bigger airplanes. So what you're seeing is, you're actually benefiting from two of the industry trends I spoke of a minute ago, where the ULCCs are growing relatively fast, which you're benefiting from that here. And also, you're benefiting from the larger gauge or the larger aircraft on United Airlines. Both are benefiting you. Delta's pulled back a little bit, but they were probably closest to where they were pre-COVID. But overall, a lot of capacity through the first seven months of the year. Next slide, please. So if we, again, if we kind of see where is this growth taking place, I spoke to this a minute ago, but in the left, you can see where the Allegiant growth is taking place. That's additional seat capacity to Orlando and additional seat capacity at Phoenix. So again, it's the ULCCs growing relatively quickly, Allegiant, and they're going to the Sun Belt. To the right, you see what United's doing. You're benefiting from the larger gauge, as you can see, in 2024, almost half their larger gauge, as you can see, in 2024, almost half their departures are probably 40%, but it's going to be in the 70 to 76 seat CRJ 700s and CRJ 900s, and they're going to be flying a lot more of those where prior year it was all the 50 seaters. In addition, they've added some frequency. And just as a note, July and August, I was looking at the advanced schedules, as of right now, they've got double the capacity in July and August, this upcoming July and August as they had last summer. So you're looking at some real pretty significant growth here in the near term. Next slide, please. I'm kind of doing a kind of a rough forecast for the full year 2020 2024. If you take those schedules through July, then you take the actual schedules of United and Delta through year end because they published their schedules. Those could still change, but they're a decent proxy at this point. You just assume Allegiant's schedules from last year or for the recent schedules for Orlando, you end up with about 185,000 in plane passengers for the full year 2024. This would be the best year at Minot since 2015. So over the last decade, this could be the best year we've seen in quite some time. These aren't real hardcore forecasts anyway, either. These are based on published schedules and published capacity. Now, these could these change? They could, but generally, they're pretty firm through summer at this point. The carriers are just starting now to play with their fall schedules, and summers are generally pretty solid at this point. So I think it's going to be a good year, even if we see a little pullback here later in the year. It's going to be a pretty good year at Minot. Next slide, please, which will be the conclusion kind of here. This is what we've got coming up from the air service development perspective. Jennifer and I and our team are working together over the next few months. In the next 30 days, we're going to be having planning meetings on calls with Delta, United, and possibly Allegiant. I'm in the process of setting those up right now. In late May, in late May, we'll be meeting with all the incumbent airlines in addition to others at an air service conference in Washington, DC. I believe we just requested those today, and on the list as of right now are American, Delta, United. I think we've got Allegiant on there and a couple of smaller airlines, J S X. I think we have SkyWest on there also. And then in September, we go to the Allegiant Airlines meeting or a conference in Las Vegas, and we will be meeting with them, making sales presentations to them. So that's that's kind of synopsis of what you're seeing in the industry today, what you're seeing at Minot today and into 2024, which looks pretty good, and that what we have in mind for the next few months in terms of air service development efforts. And that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions? Any questions? Steve?
Just again, to make sure that I have a accurate understanding of what you're saying. And I appreciate the detailed, fairly clear, actually quite clear presentation, helped by the slides. As I listen to you, it sounds like despite what some people may think or complain about, that we have pretty decent air service and one, and two, it's getting better and has prospects even of getting still better. But overall, the airline industry is facing some difficulties, and we're, you know, not bearing the brunt of those, but we're being impacted by those. Is that correct, my understanding?
I think that's probably a pretty fair summary. Again, you've got nonstop service now to Phoenix, Vegas, Orlando, probably three, if not the three most attractive, you know, vacation destinations in the United States. You have good connectivity over Minneapolis and Delta. You have even better connectivity, frankly, over Denver on United. And again, over time, hopefully, we'll see some more capacity to Denver and Minneapolis. One of the bigger challenges from a network airline perspective, when I say network, the airlines that, you know, you connect typically on, which would be United, Delta, and American, one of the challenges is sometimes is geographical proximity. To get some of the airline hubs, such as Atlanta, that requires a pretty big airplane just to go that far from a distance perspective. And being in the north central United States, that, you know, Denver and Minneapolis are the two obvious connecting points. But over time, I think those will do well. You've got a North Dakota's got a strong economy right now. Incomes, I believe, year over year were up more than any other state in the country. And within that, western North Dakota, I think, is doing the best of the region right now, whether it be the Minot area, the Williston. Oil's been pretty good up late. So I'm getting a little winded here. But in general, yes, I agree with your assessment. It's pretty good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If there are none, thank you so much, Mr. Bowen, for your presentation today, this evening.
All right. Thank you for your time. Take care.
We will move on to item 9.2 on the agenda, and that's recycling update with Jason Sorenson.
There we go. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I just wanted to give a quick update on kind of how things have progressed over the last seven months since we started recycling. The first day of recycling collection was July 17. So we've got a few months under our belt, and just wanted to let you know kind of how things are going. So our final delivered cart number, we delivered 12,302 carts. We had somewhere around about 2,500 opt outs. We have about an 80% partition participation rate. That's based on basically carts sitting in people's driveways. If we dig in a little deeper and we look at our, we can get data off of all of our trucks and look at verified tips and things of that nature. So you look at the set out rate, and of those 80%, we're collecting, you know, looking at the averages, 63, 71, you know, somewhere around about 65% of the people that have a cart are putting it out every collection period. So not not terrible bad. We have pretty good participation, a lot of interest in the program. One of the one of the neat neat things that we got as part of the recycling partnership grant is that they funded a complete composition study. So a company called Kessler Consulting came in, and they set up the pictures you see on the screen. They set up a tent with, excuse me, with different bins, and they took a representative sample from every route that our drivers collect, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 200 pound representative sample. And then they broke all the trash and all the recycling down into 50 different components, individual components, to find out what all of our trash is made of and what all of our recycling is made of, and then gave us some data. And some of the some of the key findings in our recycling stream, about 62% of our entire recycling stream is recycled paper and cardboard. About 20% is recyclable containers, plastic bottles, steel, tin, aluminum cans, things of that nature, and then about 17% contaminants. The 17% should have an asterisk by it. The day that they did the recycling composition study on, I think it was the the Tuesday route, it was raining. So any garbage cans that maybe had the lids open would have gotten some wet material. And one of the main contaminants in the recycling of that 17% was wet paper and cardboard. So that's kind of an anomaly. But I'll show you here on the next page, we actually have a sort of what our material actually looks like. But in the trash stream, we found that about 20% of what's in the trash is still recyclable. Not surprising, since we have about 20% of the population that's not recycling. So there's some room for improvement there. About 33% is compostable material, and 50% was other garbage, pet waste, plastic film, diapers, textiles, things of that nature. Then when they take that data and they break it down to capture rates, we're capturing about 38.6% of our program recyclables. So that's definitely lower than we'd like to see. But it gives us an idea of where we are. And I guess one thing I should add here, these percentages are based on the number of collections on each route. So that would be, you know, basically, so they're based on the the 80% population that's participating, 9,000 some odd people. But when you look at the set out rate, basically, the math should probably be done with that 65% of that number. So these collection rates are actually higher because the the set out rate is it's a lower population, so you're dividing by a smaller number. We're capturing about 69% of corrugated cardboard, just under 50% of recycled paper, and about 25% of containers. So then, just to give an idea of kind of how this how this goes, so when we collect our material here in Minot, we compact it into trailers, we haul it to a facility in Demcon. So once we got our first trailers, we're in the program for Demcon. So what they do with a new program is based on, you know, we give them, you know, it's about 18 tons on a truck, so we give them material, and they pay us based on their facility average. So their facility accepts glass and accepts materials that aren't as a part of our program. But until they have an opportunity to basically, they basically have to shut their entire facility down. They have to clean it all out, and then they run our material through all by itself. And then once they are able to do that, then we actually get paid based on what our actual material composition is. So what you see here, this is a combination of what our sort looks like versus a facility average, and then kind of how that would translate into value. So the columns on the left, you can see there, when you look at the the value and the rates that comes to a the ACR is the average commodity rebate of $71.54, and then we get 80% of that. So we were getting 57.23 basically through the the first six months of the program. So then on December 11, I have on the screen there, they did our sort. So the two big or the one big finding is that the facility average had about 16 and 1/2% glass. Our stream has less than 1%. So instead of paying $15.84 a ton, we're only paying about 0.9. So we have a very clean recycling stream. And then our clean recycling stream basically comes back into a higher higher rebate for our material. So you can see the ACR with our material, that's if markets stay the same. The commodity rebate or the commodity market values, those change on a monthly basis. But if they were to stay the same, our ACR would jump to about 113, and then we get 80% of that, so about $90. So then the the big numbers for our program are the processing fee and the transport fee. Those are the two big costs to us. So we're paying about $77 a ton processing, and we're transporting for about $140 a ton. And then we get a rebate back of, you know, if if commodity markets stay the same, or and say at the end of January, if our rebate is $90, so we're we're more than breaking even on the processing, and then we're starting to chip away at some of that transport number. So I just graphed these just to show kind of how that delta has closed up now that we've done our sort, and then we'll we should get higher value for the material that we're sending to Minneapolis. But just to remind the council that this is, these are commodity markets, they're cyclical, they go up and down. So just a couple of facts down on the screen, over the over the last three years, commodity markets have probably been as low as $20 to $30 a ton, and they've been as high as 150 or close to 200 for certain materials. And then in 2001, mixed paper in particular was minus $10 a ton. So you had to actually pay to get rid of it. It was just like having trash or glass in the recycling stream. So all in all, the I think the the values and the numbers look look pretty decent. We went into this, I don't think, I hope I did a good job of educating you that this wasn't going to be a money making proposition, but we're trying to manage the costs as good as we could and and make it as cost effective program as possible. And I think we're we're getting really close. So then what's next? We have the data, so we can do a little more education. Christina, our recycling coordinator, she's been out in the school system. She's been doing some of those things. We still need to get out in public and maybe do some bin audits where we're seeing routes with certain issues. So we can help reduce those contaminants and keep the the stream looking good. Try to increase capture rates of some of the higher value materials. We're only collecting, you know, 50% of containers. I think I read a I think I read a study the other day. I think they said aluminum cans, basically one in two gets recycled. So just just through normal activities, you're losing losing 50%. And that's obviously the the highest value commodity we have in the stream. Increase participation. So there is still room to increase the the residential. We have that 20% block that that isn't. So anybody that wants to participate, they can call us and we'll get them set up. There's a lack of a commercial program. We've had people that have reached out. We don't do commercial collection. We're not set up to do commercial collection. And it doesn't sound, it sounds like some companies have actually reached out to some of the private haulers, and they're not interested in in setting up recycling collection. So that's, I think, a nut we have to crack and figure out what what makes sense there, whether it's the city standing up a a commercial recycling program or what that looks like, but definitely some things to think about. Regional access, we have all the small communities in the six counties that we that we take trash from. So making sure that they're aware that we have a program now. I've been told that the Minot Air Force Base is working on a program that they'll start bringing us material. So definitely things to work on. But all in all, I think the takeaway is we continue to monitor and make make improvements as we need. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Are there any questions on Jason?
Oh, recycling questions. So I was going to pull like from seven months ago. So are the commodity prices consistent with what we you had projected? Like, is there any surprises?
Mayor Ross, older woman Evans, no, I when when we first got into this, commodity numbers were very low. So actually seeing a number of 90 right now is is not bad. I'm probably surprised that they've rebounded as much as they have in just the last six months.
Has there been any, because I know people are, you know, still annoyed they can't recycle glass. Has there been any improvements in that commodity market?
In which one?
Glass.
Uh, no.
Okay, I didn't think so, but I just I want people to hear that. Mom, if you're listening, I want you to hear that. Okay. Just can't understand why. We just can't suck it up and do glass. And feedback or observations on if every other week is sufficient? Are people's carts overflowing? Is or have we hit a sweet spot with every other week? Like, what's that looking like?
Mayor Ross, older woman Evans, I would probably need a little more data. Anecdotally, I'm a I'm a family of four, and a couple of my older, my kids are a little bit older, so they're probably not as round for dinner as much. And every two weeks, my container is pretty much full. We have a fairly significant amount of people that have signed up with two containers, and we've had people that have called and asked for weekly recycling collection. So I think it's, I think it depends who you talk to. You know, obviously, you know, there there's some some older people in our population. It's just a husband and wife, and they've opted out because they're like, we wouldn't fill that thing in two months, you know. So, you know, it's trying to find that balance between what works the best. We're probably in a pretty good position where we are. You know, the set out rate is is pretty high. And, you know, we're collecting, you know, about somewhere in about 100 tons a month. So we're we're similar to kind of where industry industry averages would be for, you know, amount per household. So, yeah, I think we're doing okay.
And I think, as you reminded people, they can, you know, if they are filling it up between weeks, you can call Public Works and ask for, you're going to be charged double, right? But you can get that second container if you're you have a larger household or, you know, you just recycle everything. So it'll be delivered quite quickly, too.
Yes, very.
Steve?
Thank you. That analysis that the company did in terms of how our stream compares to what they're normally expecting, receiving and paying out on, how often will they be doing that and updating our receipts?
Mayor Ross, alderman Padraig Gullough, according to our contract, they'll do it once a year.
So we have a lot of time to kind of get people to kind of improve their behavior, if you will, and generate more stuff.
Yeah.
Second question was curious why the wet cardboard was a problem? I mean, one would dry out eventually?
Um, no, most of the companies that take the cardboard, they don't want it wet. Sometimes you'll see, you know, places that are storing like bales of cardboard, and you'll see they're out in the elements. That's generally not a good thing. All the all the wet stuff will generally get thrown out at the sorting at the sorting. All the, all the wet stuff will generally get thrown out at the sorting, at the sorting facility.
Because it screws up the machines, like, because, you know, it gets put in these machines to be.
So it's a processing issue, it's still cardboard?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, it just really, yeah, and like the machines are expensive that.
Oh, yeah.
To sort them. So they don't like put things in there that they know will like choke it up. So the cardboard mad.
Anything else for Jason? Thank you. Good presentation, Jason.
Thank you.
Now moving on to item number 10 on the agenda, and that's adjournment. So moved. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.